This meeting of the Gadsden City Council will now come to order and the chair calls on City Clerk Iva Nelson for the roll call.
Councilman Harris?
Here.
Williams?
Here.
Avery?
Here.
Eccles?
Here.
Stewart?
Here.
Cannon?
Here.
Reed?
Here.
We have a quorum present, the meeting is open for business. I'm going to ask Councilman Williams to lead the invocation. Please stand and remain standing for the pledge of allegiance.
Let us pray. Father, we thank you for this opportunity to be here today. Father, we thank you for all present. Father, we thank you for the opportunity to engage in the activities of city business. Father, we ask that you would touch and bless us, Father, as we serve as stewards over the resources that we have responsibility for. Father, we ask, Father, that you would allow us to operate and function with wisdom, Father God, and the expertise that's needed to be effective, Father. We love you, we glorify you, and we thank you for this day. For it's in Jesus' name we ask it all. Amen.
Amen. Our pledge of allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the Republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Chair, entertain a motion to approve the minutes of the work session and council meeting on May the first. So moved.
Second.
Clerk, if you take the vote.
Those in favor, let it be number saying aye.
Aye.
Those opposed, motion carries to approve minutes.
Chair, entertain a motion to ratify payment of the accounts for the week of April the 27th through May the 3rd. So moved.
Second.
Clerk, if you take the vote.
Those in favor, let it be number saying aye.
Aye.
Those opposed, motion carries to ratify payment of the accounts.
Proclamation, Mayor.
First one is for Ms. Ariel Raleigh. Would you come up, please, ma'am? I want to say before I read this, she got up at pre-council last week and talked for about five or 10 minutes. Did an excellent job.
Yes.
When I was a senior in high school, she's only a freshman, a three-minute speech almost gave me a nervous breakdown. So, anyway. Whereas Ariel Raleigh, a freshman at Gadsden City High School, attended an anti-bullying rally in October 2011 where she heard Kirk Smalley speak concerning the suicide of his 11-year-old son after he was bullied. During the rally, Ariel observed the reactions of her fellow students and noted that some who were crying empathized with the person who was bullied and others who were lifing would likely bully other students. The realization that the number of students crying or lifing was too great inspired Ariel, who herself is a victim of bullying, to take action to raise awareness, educating people of the issues of bullying, and teaching them to open their eyes to the issues around them. Whereas Ariel Raleigh has organized a Walk a Mile in Their Shoes, a 5K Run, and a One Mile Fun Run designed to promote awareness of bullying, which will be held on Saturday at the YMCA of Coosa Valley. Therefore, I, Sherman Gotten, Mayor of the City of Gadsden, do hereby proclaim Saturday, May 12, 2012, as Walk a Mile in Their Shoes Day in the City of Gadsden, and urge all citizens to join with Ariel Raleigh in being the voice of the silent and working to lower the number of bullies. I do want to say a little more about that. When I was in the 7th grade, I was 12, and back then you didn't get promoted till you passed, and we had some guys in the 7th, 8th, and 9th grade who were 15 and 16. And if you think, we didn't get bullied, they just grabbed our arms and took our lunch money away from us, among other things. Of course, today, you know, we got over it, but I think today it's so much worse with all the social media and things you can do to them other than just a little harassment. And I think it's really one of, when I taught school, I used to call it a shakedown if I ever saw the older guys with one of the smaller guy's arm. He got about five licks in front of everybody. And I've noticed that even in high school, as you have, a lot of times the kids who do what the teachers say, make good grades, and are good students, the ones who don't do that, they make fun of them and bully them and pick on them because they don't want you to do something they're too lazy to do. So, we appreciate you doing that very much.
Mayor?
Keep the work.
Yes.
I just want to make a comment. You know, people talk about how we're going to change the world, how we're going to change attitude. She's a prime example. We do it one student at a time. That's all it takes, is just a one.
That's right.
Next, I have a proclamation for Dr. Renee Coverhouse and Betty Willoughby. All these big proclamations with big words like "manages" is getting me confused. Whereas mental health is essential to everyone's overall health and well-being, all Americans experience times of difficulty and stress in their lives. There is a strong body of research that supports specific tools that all Americans can use to better handle challenges and to protect their health and well-being. Mental health conditions are real and prevalent in our nation. With effective treatment, those individuals with mental health conditions can recover and lead full, productive lives. Each business, school, government agency, healthcare provider, organization, and citizen shares the burden of mental health problems and has a responsibility to promote mental wellness and support prevention efforts, and that is accomplished in this community through Mental Health America of Etowah. Be it resolved that I, Sherman Gotten, Mayor of the City of Gadsden, proclaim May 2012 as Mental Health Month, healing traumas invisible wounds in the City of Gadsden, Alabama, as Mayor of the City of Gadsden. I also call upon the citizens, governmental agencies, public and private institutions, businesses, and schools in the city to recommit our community to increasing awareness and understanding of mental health, the steps our citizens can take to protect their mental health and the need for appropriate and accessible services for all people with mental health conditions.
You know, the previous proclamation about bullying and congratulations to you for your initiative is part of what happens with trauma people suffer through mental health issues. And just because the external trauma is gone doesn't mean that the wounds are not still there and that people don't still suffer. We tend to think if a tornado has passed by, or if a person has come home from war, or if a serious situation has resolved itself, then everything's fine and people are okay, and they're not. And one of the things we're trying to do is raise awareness of that this month as May being Mental Health Month. So, thank you very much for this proclamation, we appreciate it.
Okay, the last one is for Ms. Rebecca Weber and Leila Padgett. Please come forward. And in case y'all don't know, I happen to live close to Ms. Weber. She makes the best pecan pies you'll ever eat. I think I still have the last plate she gave me. I washed it, but I don't believe I've returned it yet.
Is that a hint, Mayor, for her to do another one?
Sir?
Was that a hint for her to do another one?
No, 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 no. I don't need another one. Whereas the family serving as the primary source of love, identity, self-esteem, and support is the very foundation of our communities and state. In Gadsden, Alabama, Etowah County, there are over 200 children and youth in foster care being provided with a safe, secure, and stable home along with the compassion and nurture of a foster family. Foster families, we open their homes and hearts and offer help to children whose families are in crisis. They play a vital role in helping children, families heal and reconnect, and launching children into successful adulthood. Dedicated foster families frequently adopt foster children, resulting in a greater need for more foster families. There are numerous individuals, public and private organizations, who work to increase public awareness of the needs of children in the end and leaving foster care as well as the enduring and valuable contribution of foster parents. And the foster care system is only as good as those who choose to be part of it. Therefore, I, Sherman Gotten, Mayor of the City of Gadsden, by the virtue of the authority vested in me, do hereby proclaim May as Foster Care Month in the City of Gadsden and urge all citizens to come forward and do something positive that will help change a lifetime for children and youth in foster care.
I just want to say on behalf of the staff, Mr. Suraj, our staff, our foster parents, and our children, we thank you for recognizing us and giving us this plaque. We always need new foster parents, and we're always looking to recruit. If anyone would like to contact us, we have a number of children that always can use a good home. Thank you.
Unfinished business resolution ordering abatement of nuisance on property at 1419 Jackson Avenue in District 5. Jack D. Clay, Sr., and wife Marjorie N. Clay being the last known owners. Resolution was tabled for 30 days on April the 3rd. What's the pleasure of the council?
Mr. President, on the recommendation of the Building Department, I'd like to ask for another 30-day table on this property.
Second. Clerk, if you take the vote.
Those in favor to table the resolution for 30 days, let it be number saying aye.
Aye.
Those opposed, motion carries to table for 30 days.
New business, is there any new business?
Mr. President, I have one. I'd like to ask for unanimous consent to consider an ordinance amending fiscal year 2012 budget to reflect the transfer of funds to cover the cost of additional audio, video propelled cameras.
Second. Clerk, if you take the vote.
Those in favor to consider the ordinance today, let it be number saying aye.
Aye.
Those opposed, consent has been granted.
Now move to adopt.
Second.
Can you give a second?
Yeah, I got a second.
Three of them.
Any discussion?
Mayor?
I do have one thing. I just have a problem sometimes when things are misrepresented in the newspaper. The Public Safety Committee ordered, wanted to order the cameras, which is a great idea, and they recommended to the council, and we decided to order half and see how they worked before we spent the money for the rest of them. And then later some issues came up, so the council changed their mind, which was fine with me. And we are ordering all of those. But it was, if you do read the newspaper, the editorials sound like I was too tight to buy them all to start with and was told to cut the check. And it amazes me how people who never come to a meeting, we don't know who they are, they don't sign their names, know so much about what goes on that they don't put the correct information in the paper. And I just want to clarify that point, I'm sorry.
Is there any other discussion?
That was a discussion?
I'm just glad to get the cameras and finally get this thing resolved and get it done. I'm with you 100%.
I believe everybody's ready for this to proceed on, to get that. I think we all realize the benefit of this.
I think everybody up here knows the most dangerous person in the world is one that's misinformed.
That's right.
You can tell a liar real quick, but a misinformant, he really believes what he's talking about.
Let me say, we're spending this money on these cameras and recorders, and they ain't worth the paper it's written on if we don't enforce a strict guidelines as far as their usage. You know, and that's where my concern will come in, and I'm sure our new chief will deal with that issue. I don't think the council at this point in time can. But there should be some type of penalty, a very severe penalty, if they don't happen to turn their camera on, or something happened, or it wasn't working. I mean, you know, it's for their protection. And if I was a police officer and I came on duty, the first thing I would do is to check my equipment to make sure it's working, whether it's my gun or whatever else. And if it ain't working, I ain't going out that day. And I don't care what the chief or anybody else say until I get my equipment ready, my gun and my camera and everything else, because it's for my protection. I think we need to be very, very strict on this, and I'm sure the chief will come up with some type of policy on this, because otherwise we're just wasting paper and time.
You know, I don't want to beat this dead horse with a stick, but, I mean, at the end of the day, protection speaks to legal protection. And officers should be open to this because, again, in this current legal climate, you know, it's not enough to say that I was on duty and a city employee when an incident occurred and I was, you know, was not wearing my camera. If there's some level of liability, you as an individual can be held accountable to some degree. And maybe I'm not appropriately addressing that from a legal standpoint, but I know the risk exists now, in this existing climate. So, it's important for on-duty police officers to protect themselves, and I think this helps in that regard.
Again, like you said, I don't want to beat it to death either, but I think the headlines in the paper today, the city's being sued by a former employee for harassment, sexual harassment. It would have been great if whoever it was had a camera on. You know, again, I don't know how much money we're going to spend, how much it's going to cost us to defend, and if you found guilt in the whole nine yards, but I think this is money well-spent providing we use it. And that's going to be the key.
Clerk, if you take the vote.
Those in favor to adopt the ordinance, let it be number saying aye.
Aye.
Those opposed, motion carries to adopt.
Is any other new business?
Mr. President, I have a resolution I'd like to ask for unanimous consent to consider this morning. It's a resolution authorizing the application for a grant through ADECA for the recreational trails program on Jim Martin Wildlife Park. It's a grant up to $100,000. Unanimous consent to consider.
Clerk, if you take the vote.
Those in favor to consider the resolution today, let it be number saying aye.
Aye.
Those opposed, consent has been granted.
Now I'll ask for passage, please.
Second. Is any further discussion?
This is to replace the boardwalk down on Jim Martin Wildlife. It's going to cost about $200,000 to replace all that boardwalk. It's probably over a half a mile of boardwalk. It's being used by a lot of people. It's a great place to go down there in the afternoon. But anyway, this is the first step, something we've been working on for several years now, so we're really pleased that this grant will be coming. We'll use this and raise a little more money and replace that boardwalk down there.
Do want to commend Councilman Stewart for being a strong advocate for this project over the years. I've witnessed him, I mean, I've witnessed him fight for these funds, so he is definitely a strong advocate.
It's the squeaking wheel that gets the grease.
There you go.
I'll ask for passage, please.
Clerk, if you take the vote.
Those in favor to adopt the resolution, let it be number saying aye.
Aye.
Those opposed, motion carries to adopt.
Mr. President, I have an option. Resolution I would like to ask for unanimous consent to consider today. It is a resolution approving a special events alcoholic beverage license for Riverfest, which will be held on June 8th and June 9th.
Second. Clerk, if you take the vote.
Those in favor to consider the resolution today, let it be number saying aye.
Aye.
Those opposed, consent has been granted.
Move to adopt.
Second. Is any discussion?
Mr. President, if Ms. New would like to address that, we'll let her have comments on the, about the Riverfest and the alcoholic beverage.
Counsel, first I'd like to thank you for the opportunity to address this issue. We want to assure you that we're going to use this permit in the most responsible way possible. This will be a beer garden that will limit access to 21 and up only. You will not be able to take a beverage outside of the beer garden. We've had repeated requests, year after year after year, that we implement a program such as this. We will be using law enforcement for security only. We have been working closely with the sheriff and with Chief Crane here to make sure that we're going to do this in the most responsible method possible, and I do appreciate your consideration today.
Hey Heather, tell everybody again when Riverfest is.
It is June 8th and 9th. Tickets are on sale now, $35 for the weekend. That's about the cheapest festival, music festival you can go to.
I just want to say, oh, it's okay, I'm just going to make a comment there. I just want to thank the Riverfest committee or whoever. After 20-some years, I've been hammering the fact that VIPs can go and have a drink and the average citizen couldn't, and I had a serious problem with that. As a matter of fact, I think when they first brought it up, I voted against it. I was very opposed to letting the VIPs have that opportunity when you don't give other citizens. So, I'm glad to see y'all finally came into the 21st century and realized that everybody's important, so, good.
Is any other discussion?
Those in favor to adopt the resolution, let it be number saying aye.
Aye.
Those opposed, motion carries to adopt.
Is any other new business?
Mr. President, I have an item here, and this is an ordinance amending the fiscal year budget 2012, general fund budget to extend the volunteer retirement incentive plan. So, I'd ask for unanimous consent to consider.
Second. Clerk, if you take the vote.
Those in favor to consider the ordinance today, let it be number saying aye.
Aye.
Those opposed, consent has been granted.
Now I'd ask for passage.
Second. Is any discussion?
Mr. President, what we're doing here is putting in an additional $1.1 million. We've had somewhere in the neighborhood of about 40-something employees, 46, 47 employees who have turned in their paperwork. Again, we're not sure how many of those individuals are going to actually accept it, but we wanted to make sure there was enough funds in that just in case all 46 or 47 decide to go out. And so, we're amending the budget to reflect that.
Any other discussion? Clerk, if you take the vote.
Those in favor to adopt the ordinance, let it be number saying aye.
Aye.
Those opposed, motion carries to adopt.
Is any others? Department reports, committees, are there any remarks by the mayor and the council being?
Sure, I want to just start about thanking three members of our Jack's Fine Dining Coffee Club on the mountain. They really went out of their way, did a neighborly thing on Sunday. Dole Bud and Jerry and Charlie, I want to thank them personally, I really do. And so, I'll tell y'all later what it was all about, but they came to a neighbor's assistance and helped him out a great deal. Another thing is Buster Porch. Billy, we went over there and, of course, I got to say again, Billy and I went to Jack's Fine Dining and got us a hamburger.
Absolutely.
And came back to the Fine Dining of Buster and listened to that music at the waterfall, is that it?
Water wall.
Water wall. That was a lot of fun.
It was.
It really was. We had a good time. And the little girl that danced, Billy. You can expound on that, but you got to tell them what that deal was.
I don't know if I can.
And to Annie Ruth's guidance, she better just invite us to that party in June. We got them down pat. That's all I got. Billy, do expound on the little girl.
Johnny.
I want to thank everyone that came out Saturday night to Music on Meekin' at Alabama City Gazettebo. It was a great turnout. The only problem we had, we had about 150 people there. We gave out about 240 hot dogs. I just miscounted, I had more dogs than I had buns, Mayor. My math wasn't right on that for some reason. But we're going to take care of that next month. We'll be back next month having that. I would like to thank Chief Crane and Mayor Gotten and Brian Harbison, Jason Hill, and two police officers last night that came to District 6 meeting. It was a big success. We aired out a bunch of stuff that was going on in our district, and we'll be having another one probably in July, the 1st of July sometime. We'll get back with a time and date on that. But I just want to say that I'm really proud of how the police department is going now. I mean, I've seen more police cars on the street, riding tickets, getting out, talking to people on foot, checking abandoned buildings, and having a long time, and I really do appreciate that. That's all I got.
I'd like to comment on our new police chief. He's keeping us informed on what's going on, and I sure do appreciate that. I saw some information, and I cautioned everybody about driving in the City of Gadsden.
Amen.
Just looking at South 11th Street, one week 50, let's say 41 speeding tickets and several other tickets for no license and this, that, and the other, but, and then the last week, 25 speeding tickets. That's on South 11th Street alone. They're doing a terrific job, but if you're driving in Gadsden, you better slow down. Thank you.
Thank you, Mr. President. You know, I don't know if anybody realizes, I guess people in Montgomery realize that the legislature is still in session. I still got a bunch of visitors at my house from Montgomery. They always get the women and children out of town when they down there. It's very interesting that the group that we sent down, and I say we, I didn't vote for any of them that's down there from our area, but that's another story. We sent those individuals down and they promised no new taxes. I mean, that was their thing. But ladies and gentlemen, they're taxing us to death. They're putting in all kind of fees and adding costs to this, adding costs to that. So, you need to remind those individuals when they come back home after this session is over with about all those no new taxes. Sure, they're not adding on property tax, but when you add $200 or $300 on a court cost, $1,000 on this cost, or something on another cost, I mean, it's a tax. I don't care how you look at it. As one famous politician said, you know, how you can tell a hockey mom from a pig, it's got lipstick. Well, I don't care how you put lipstick on this thing, it's still a tax. And we need to be mindful of that, and I hope everybody will hold those individuals' feet to the fire when they come back home after this session is over with and see if we can't reverse this issue, because the people who are being taxed are poor people. The people who can least afford trying to get out of jail or get out of whatever the case may be, you know, these are the people who are being taxed. And we need to talk about that to our individuals and make sure that they understand that we know what's going on. I talked to a friend of mine, we're going to be having NBC LEO meeting coming up in a couple of months, but I was talking to a friend of mine in another state about the property tax. We need to understand in Alabama, and I keep talking about that, that we're the number 50th in the nation when it comes down to property tax. And I know people don't like to talk about that, but that's a firm way of supporting education and supporting the state budget if we will go ahead on and do that.
And it doesn't fluctuate.
And it doesn't fluctuate. You're absolutely correct, you know. But what happens, we've got these big land barons down in South Alabama and West Alabama, wherever else, that own all that property down there. Those guys are paying somewhere in the neighborhood of about 50 cents per acre on their taxes.
They pay what I pay.
They pay what you pay. 50 cents per acre, you know. But if you look at what we pay here in the city, if you take four houses that probably were set on an acre, you're talking about probably 1,000 or so that we're paying property tax per acre in the city, and these guys are paying less than a dollar. Go figure it. There's something wrong with that picture. And we're talking about we're always broke, we can't fund state services and the whole nine yards. Talk to your representatives when they come back. Off my soapbox, I'm sorry.
I was going to have them call on the mayor next and adjourn the meeting and have a press conference. Mayor?
I won't say much, except another reason that the taxes are low is because the politicians in Montgomery don't spend the money right, and people would do it if they knew it would be spent right. That's another big reason too on that. Plus, you're right, those special interests, I don't know what you're talking about. I don't have it.
That's right.
Thank you, Mr. President. I mean, while it's out there, you know, I don't disagree at all. I mean, you know, if you look at when our state constitution was constructed and whose interests were represented, most of the folks in this room, women, minorities, poor people, were not represented when it was developed, and those rules haven't changed much relative to our tax structure. So, we possess probably one of the largest and most antiquated documents in the, not just in the country, but in the world, relative to our state constitution, and it limits our ability to raise revenue in difficult economic times. So, you got to remind, you know, to Councilman Avery's point, you got to remind these elected officials that, you know, we're behind the times when it comes to dealing with our economic shortfalls, and we've got to get more creative. My suggestion would be to eliminate the food tax and raise property taxes, but that's just one councilman's opinion. The only other thing that I have, and it's probably the most important thing, is this. The anti-bullying event that Ms. Raleigh is going to be so graciously sponsoring is going to be held at, it's going to begin at the YMCA. Think it's a 5K run and walk. Think, and again, it's anti-bullying and teen suicide. I don't want to shorten the title and take away I don't want to shorten the title and take away from any of the effectiveness of the event. I think, again, it's wonderful that this young lady stepped up and been willing to do that. It starts Saturday at 8 o'clock. It starts Saturday at 8, again, at the Y. And I can tell you that I'll be there, but I will not be running. But I'll be supporting and I may walk. But I ask that anybody that's available this Saturday morning to please, please come out and support this young lady. And also there may be a need for, because I think she's going to be providing t-shirts and some other things and that stuff costs money, doesn't it? So if there's any way for the public to support her in that regard, please do so. Thank you.
Thank you, Mr. President. I also would like to also emphasize the fact that we need to be behind this young lady in this effort to raise the awareness of bullying in our society. I think it may have been referred to up here earlier that when we were in high school, most of us were in high school, some of us came along a little later. But most of us back in the days when we were in high school, elementary school, a big kid walk up to you and grab you and pull a strong arm on you, take your lunch money from you. That was about, that was about as much bullying as we had then, but boy, has it changed since then. So we need to make, we need to be aware of that and do everything that we can to prevent it in our society today. And I hope that everyone will, to whatever degree you can, support this function on Saturday. And as Ben said, I want everybody to support lunch at the Waterwall with Buster. On Monday, April, May 21st, I think he'll be there from 11 to 1. And like I said, we went down to Jackson, got some fine cuisine and came back and listened to some songs, some music that sort of depicts our time era. So I encourage you to do that. It was very relaxing. And I must tell you, I don't know if I can do this young lady justice. The little girl that was dancing, there was one little girl that got up and she got out there and she danced and she, she was about two years old, I guess. Two years old and she danced and she, I don't know what you call it. She did this little thing on her hands and turned over and rolled over. She was, and she was, it was beautiful. And she danced for 20 minutes, you know, out there, just a wonderful event. It was good to see her out there. But I encourage you to join Buster for music on the 21st. Some of us won't be able to support it, but we'll be there in spirit, Buster. We may not be here, but we'll be there in spirit. And also, last night, you know, we had another, Johnny had a District 6 meeting and people were, people turned out for the meeting. The chief was there, the mayor was there, Billings was there, you know, Parks and Recreation was there. We had several, two police officers in addition to the police chief were there. And, no, I must say after the publicity that we gave that meeting, you know, the attendance was sort of disappointing. And the thing I want to encourage all of our citizens, not just in District 6, but District 1, whenever there's a meeting being held in your area, in your district, you need to come out and attend, because that's the time to bring things to department heads, the mayor, chief, everyone. That's the time to bring these issues to them in a public forum and not just a telephone call or an email or note. So I encourage you to come to those meetings so that you can voice your opinion and then you can also hear some concerns of the city as well. So it's a good working relationship that we need to establish in all those meetings. I also encourage you to come to the city council meeting also. But you get more accomplished to me, you know, when you go to your district meetings, your neighborhood watch meetings that you have. Attend those, please. Reiterating what Bill Stewart said, South 11th Street, I was shocked when I saw the number of tickets. Well, I wasn't shocked. I was glad to see the number of tickets that they had written for speeding last week over on South 11th Street. And I was glad to see the number they had written on Peyton Ridge, Peyton Road and Riverside and East Scars. And I'm going to continue to say that we're going to insist that our police force enforce the speed laws and the regulations that we have in the city. So, and we have certain areas that are more prone to people speeding than others and those are areas where we have people cutting through communities and neighborhoods, coming from surrounding cities, going to point A or point B, you know, and they're coming through our neighborhoods and speeding. We're going to stop it. And I'm just asking everybody to be aware of it. When you are aware of something, you know, call the chief. When there's excessive speeding and excessive number of people speeding on your streets in your community and your neighborhood, call the police. Call the police. I encourage you to do that. And my final thing is by now the governor should have signed, we hope he has signed there, no texting while driving bill in Montgomery. Hallelujah. I want to, I want to encourage us to support that thing 100 percent. And young people who are texting while you're driving, just be aware, because it's a dangerous thing, it's a scary thing when I'm riding and I see people, young people texting and I see the situations that they get themselves into while they're trying to drive and texting and eating and putting on makeup all at the same time. It's a terrible thing. So I encourage you to obey the law and stop texting while you're trying to drive.
We have a texting ordinance in our city already.
But this is statewide.
I know it's statewide. You're aware of that.
So we can now enforce it more forcefully.
Okay. Did y'all get all you needed or do you need to have a press conference? I'll entertain a motion with adjourn.
So move.